Hello, good morning. Welcome everyone. Dear Excellencies, distinguished guests, members of the European Parliament, ladies and gentlemen, and everyone joining us online. Welcome to the public hearing on the 3C Initiative called Connectivity in Central Europe. I am delighted to be hosting this event so early in the parliamentary term and to talk about the importance and impact of the 3C Initiative. In my brief introductory comments, I want to focus on the key word in the title of today's public hearing: connectivity. Why? Mainly because after nearly 10 years, connectivity is a main reason for the 3SI success. Connectivity will also be to the basic for the 3SI future success. Professor Ożelska Stonczek will go into more detail about the 3AC in her speech, but I will just mention that since its conception almost a decade ago, the 3AC has now expanded to 13 member states and four strategic partners, including Japan this year. It has several states that are now attempting to join the 3AC and has attracted the interest of neighboring states that also participate in the 3AC summits. The potential of the 3AC is clear to everyone and the importance of connecting states effectively is evident. Not just based on the original aims of developing transport, energy and digital infrastructure, but also other goals such as using connectivity to develop wider economic growth, security, engage in geopolitics and allow the 3C member states to develop closer relations across the world. The reason why the 3AC now has these ambitious goals is because, I repeat, it has an excellent track record of establishing connectivity. A quick note on the US and Japan as strategic partners. There can be no better indication of how successful the 3SI strategy is when important global leaders want to connect. Because of the US partnership, the US State Department invites US companies to participate in the 3AC summit and business forums and has put interested businesses in contact with high-level contacts from 3AC. Attention to countries. I am sure Japan will also be involved in future summits the same way. In short, the potential of 3AC is visible to the world as well as benefiting trade relations with our global strategic partners. The 3AC has also gained a global platform. The aim must be to develop further global partner relations with North America, Asia and other partners of the world. Because the 3AC model based on connectivity is successful, we must introduce another key concept that must guide the 3AC resilience. The 3AC must be resilience in connecting the work which has seen as such exciting development and which has attracted worldwide interest. As such, the early 3AC summits and the regular 3C business forum are vital to improving connectivity and expanding up the 3AC development and enrich. This is where we hope a role to play. There must also be input from interest parties, discussion forums such as here in the EU and better communication to the general public. Despite the success of the 3AC, the general public has little awareness of the 3AC and what it has achieved. This is why events like this are so important. We have to connect to the wider public and tell them why the 3AC is beneficial and important. The success story of transport infrastructure, the better road and railway links that connect us directly impact the citizens of 3AC countries, enriching them and member states. This is a success story and we must work hard to make sure the general public hears this message. Next year, the 2025 3AC summit will be held in Poland and we will celebrate the 10th anniversary of the 3AC and its achievements, but its success comes obligation. 10 years ago, at the beginning of the 3AC, the US think-tank Atlantin Council published a report titled Completing Europe. This report draw attention to the investment gap between the high levels of investment in the developed Western Europe and the much lower levels of investment in Central Europe. The report identified a clear imbalance in European development. The 3AC was set up to tackle the problem and even thought there is still work to do. There have been many successes. However, imbalance in Central Europe still exists. The states that wish to join the 3AC also want to address this imbalance and improve their development possibilities. Therefore, we must connect to these states such as Ukraine and Moldova and allow them to benefit from the 3AC as it has helped other countries formally under Soviet control. You cannot leave other states behind and we must be resilient in continuing to help states connect with Europe and the world. This is the obligation that lies ahead of the 3AC. A few final words of thanks just before I hand over to Professor Ożelska Stonczek. I want to pay tribute to the late Polish President Lech Kaczynski. It was under his patronage in 2006, the Wine's Declaration was adopted, which led to the creation of the hugely important Wia Karpatia Road, now an integral part of the 3AC connectivity infrastructure. I also want to pay tribute to Polish President Andrzej Duda for his valuable work, diplomacy and stewardship in pushing the 3AC to where it is today. I would also like to thank former member of European Parliament, Witol Waszykowski and Anna Fotiga for their work on the 3AC in previous terms of the European Parliament. I would also like to thank the panelists and speakers today. Her Excellency Batya Daszyńska-Muzyczka, the special representative of the President of the Republic of Poland for the 3AC, Professor Agnieszka Ożelska-Stonczek from the Polish Academy of Sciences, Professor Magdalena Bańczyk from the Institute for Western Affairs, His Excellency Gdymas Varvulis, Ambassador-at-Large for Connectivity from the Lithuanian Ministry of Foreign Affairs, Stephen Nicola Bartulica, our friend from the European Parliament, Professor Octaviam Dragomir Jora from the Bukarest University of Economic Studies and Mr. Georgios Mitracos, Director General of the International Centre for Black Sea Studies from Greece. Now, without taking any more time, I now have the pleasure to introduction Professor Ożelska-Stonczek from the Polish academic scientist, the Flores Ifior. And after this speech, Professor Magdalena Bańczyk will be creating panel discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the invitation. Thank you very much for the invitation and I would like to briefly present the basic facts about the 3C Initiative. I will use a presentation which was prepared by the 3C Initiative Research Centre project. The project is carried out at the Institute of Political Studies at the Polish Academy of Sciences. First, the first point is that we should see a list of the 3C Initiative states. And, well, I understand there is no slide on the screen, but let me say that there are 13 participating states at the 3C Initiative. There are four strategic partners to the 3C Initiative. That is the European Commission, and that is very interesting that the European Commission is the strategic partner to the 3C Initiative. The second is the United States, the third Germany and Japan, the fourth. We also have two associated participating states to the 3C Initiative, that is Ukraine and Moldova. And as regards the 13 participating states, well, I will not read the whole list, but generally on each map of the 3C Initiative, you see the borders and the important fact is that only the European member states may have the status of the 3C Initiative participating states. Here it is, the first slide that I wanted to show you. And now, coming to the second slide. What are the aims of the 3C Initiative? The 3C Initiative is a regional cooperation format which aims to expand infrastructure cooperation and infrastructure development on the north-south axis in the eastern part of the European Union, developing economic cooperation in three areas in Central Europe. These are the main three pillars: transport, energy and digitalization. And as regards some statistical data concerning the 3C Initiative, I will refer to the data prepared by Dr. Konrad Popowski from the Centre for Eastern Studies. That is important to emphasize that when we look at the area, the 3C Initiative states represent more than 30% of the European Union's territory. As regards population, the number is 27%, but when we look at the GDP, the number is 16%. So the conclusion is that something has to be done and more has to be done to make the economic development of this part of Europe more dynamic, I mean the Central Europe. And what is also very interesting is the, when we look at the institutional framework of this cooperation, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, yes, to find it. And here it is. The important part is that the 3C Initiative is not an international organization, which makes this topic more difficult for researchers. And but I, as a professor from the Polish Academy of Sciences, I encourage my colleagues, I encourage experts and analysts to learn more about the 3C Initiative because it's a very interesting, passionate subject. Although there are difficulties, there is no statute, there are no headquarters, there is no institution that we can go to, there is no international secretariat or permanent international institutional structure. Basically, the 3C is based on annual summits and we have a list of nine declarations. These are the most important documents that show us the aims of this cooperation. And finally, the results, the results of this 3C Initiative, the results are in different dimensions. The most visible form is of course the annual, are the annual summits of the presidents of the 3C Initiative states. As I said, there are now 13 participating states. And the next summit is going to be organized in Poland in April next year. The last one was organized in Vilnius by Lithuania in April this year. As we talk about results, the important and very interesting part is the 3C Initiative ecosystem. I mean extended cooperation between the 13 states in different formats. We have business forums, we have a very well-developed local government cooperation, maybe not, it is not very well-developed right now, but it is dynamically developing, that is what I want to stress. There are many think-things that cooperate and there are also research center in the region. I would like to add from my perspective that academic cooperation is not developed as much, in my opinion, as it should be in this region. We have too few, too little developed cooperation on the academic level between, for example, Poland and Greece, Poland and Romania and so on. As regards the results, there is also the financial dimension. I think that Ambassador Batya Muzyczka-Daszyńska will have much more to talk about it. Let me just mention that there is the 3C Initiative Investment Fund, a new one, the 3C Initiative Innovation Fund has just been launched and the third 3C Initiative Investment Fund, as Ursugaz, the third one, a letter of intent was signed a few months ago. Finally, there is a quite complicated list of priority interconnection projects. It is quite complicated when we remember that we have now more than 140 projects, although they are called priority. So there are many, maybe too many priority projects to be examined in a short presentation, but I would like to show you three flagship projects of this, of this 3C Initiative and if it works well, I will have an opportunity, here it is, to show you the three flagship projects. The first one is Wia Karpatia, which I think that is quite widely known. I would like to mention that the Wia Karpatia has been added to the tent project and that is also interesting to know. And Wia Karpatia is another, sorry, is another flagship project, as maybe you heard about something about the Rail Baltic, I thank you, which is also developing. Finally, I would show you, I would like to show the last slide with some pictures of the 3C Initiative Research Centre project team. And here it is. Here it is. If I had an opportunity, I would tell you more about it maybe one sentence, what we are doing within these projects. We want to develop knowledge about regional cooperation in Central Europe. We conduct research, we also carry out study visits. So far, we've been to six states and seminars, conferences are of great value to build contacts and to build academic cooperation, to build expert cooperation and also to share our knowledge with other, with other experts. Once again, thank you for your invitation. It's a great honor for me to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Professor, and please, Professor Magdalena Bańczyk will be moderating our panel discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would just say that Central Europe is crucial for European Union resilience as such. Without working, without strong Central Europe, we cannot face the future with some global and also European disastrous events which may come to Europe. That's why I would like to underline that 3CI initiative is to make strong the Central Europe as such, but to make also the strong the European Union. So this is not any kind of contradiction. This is the conjunction, between strong conjunction between the Central Europe and the European Union. I would like to ask the first question to Mr. Stephen Nicola Bartulica, and I would like to refer to 2016 because Croatia was the founding father of the 3C Initiative. And I'd like to cite the motto which was delivered in Dubrovnik in 2016, strengthening Europe, connecting North and South. Could you please explain this primary idea from Croatian perspective and especially devote your attention to the question of connecting North and South when it comes to the resilience of the Europe of such?
Thank you. I want to first extend my gratitude to Arkadiusz for this kind invitation. This is an important topic also for Croatia and I'm happy that there's a large audience today. Croatia was indeed one of the founders of this initiative. We as an independent country believe that Central Europe is a space that deserves, I would say, more attention. I think there's great hope for Europe, in Central Europe in particular. And I was very supportive from the beginning, but there was resistance inside the country to certain projects. For example, the LNG terminal we have, the floating terminal in the northern Adriatic was on the agenda for years and was for various reasons postponed, you know, for years until finally it was implemented. I hosted in another capacity as the head of a think-tank called Renewal of Culture, an event on energy security in 2017, and it was attended also by our former president Grabar Kitarovic, who was very involved in this initiative from the beginning along with the Polish president. And one of the speakers was a colleague from Lithuania at the time, he was Energy Minister Zigimantas Vaichunas. He came to Zagreb on this occasion and he was sharing similar stories from Lithuania, that various interest groups were able to slow down this project in Lithuania until it finally was realized. And we had a similar case in Croatia. Even on the panel about the LNG, there were people in Zagreb making arguments that it doesn't make economic sense, that the gas from Russia is cheaper and so on. And in hindsight, now we see how important this project has been, not just for Croatia but for Central Europe in general. I would like to make a comment regarding the funding. Because of shifting priorities, we all know that Ukraine and the reconstruction of that country will be a top priority for years to come. So I'm skeptical about the public funding for our projects. I would perhaps suggest that we should put more emphasis on the business community, on private sources of funding, making these projects viable and more appealing to the investment community. Because governments will be, I'm afraid, preoccupied with reconstructing Ukraine, as we know, the war is unfortunately still ongoing and this will require a huge, directed towards that country. So we have to be realistic, now we're here in the European Parliament, but I would say that the 3C Initiative still is for me very relevant. We will be approaching the 10-year anniversary. This is perhaps a good occasion for a reassessment of how to proceed, but I think it is something very admirable that Croatia from the beginning has been included as a partner and in fact a country that's been trying to spearhead these initiatives. So again, that's what I wanted to say initially. Like I said, there are a large number of products, projects, I didn't know it was 140, but that is a significant number and perhaps we should try to streamline this and identify really the ones that are, like I said, viable. And of course, in Croatia, we do have motorways and the interconnectivity has been improved. We have many visitors from Central Europe, as far as the Baltics, but also Poland of course and Hungary, Czech Republic visiting our country. I would propose that the, you know, priority now shifts to railways. We're far behind. My travel to, from Zagreb to Budapest is more or less, it takes the same amount of time that it did 50 years ago, by train I'm speaking. So there's much time to make up in certain areas and perhaps this initiative could be helpful in that. So thank you.
Mr. His Excellency Gdymas Varvulis, I would like to ask you about the recent development. Lithuania hosted the last summit of the 3CI in Vilnius. Could you please refer to the main achievements of this summit in spring 2024?
Thank you, Professor, and thanks to the organizers for arranging this very timely and important meeting on the 3C Initiative here in the European. Indeed, it has been an honor for Lithuania to host this year's 3SI summit, the ninth 3SI summit, and to coordinate the activities of this platform since the last summit, since the summit, the previous summit in Bucharest. And, well, we had, of course, several priorities that we, that we introduced to this framework. One of them was to strengthen the connectivity and the resilience of the infrastructure network in the north-south direction of the, of the central part of. The other priority that we really tried to promote was the, exactly the synergy between the EU and the 3C, EU sectorial policies and the 3C Initiative. Because after all, as it has already been said by Professor Agnieszka Ożelska-Stonczek, the 3SI is an intra-European connectivity platform, intra-European connectivity platform, a platform that is developed within the European Union. And this is why, by the way, our meeting today is so important, that we have this discussion in one of the key European institutions. So for us, it was really important to promote these synergies between the 3SI and the EU. Then, of course, another priority that we had for our summit in Vilnius was the reinforcement, the strengthening of the transatlantic link, the United States and to other strategic partners. And by the way, we are very glad and proud that the fourth strategic partner of the 3SI joined our ranks in Vilnius precisely. Japan was, as has already been mentioned, Japan was the country that, from outside of you, who decided to establish a closer strategic relationship to this framework. And last but not least, definitely not least, we really wanted to, Vilnius summit and the business forum to serve as a platform for mobilizing the support to Ukraine in terms of its EU integration and reconstruction, et cetera. And by the way, one of the key guests of the Vilnius summit was President Zelensky himself. I must say, organizing the summit and the business forum and all the events that around the Vilnius summit was a tall order, quite a challenge, because, not only because indeed the 3SI doesn't have a secretariat or a permanent structure, but also internally, we were organized horizontally. There was no special structure that was created for the summit, but all the state institutions tried to work in a horizontal way, in a kind of team-Lithuania approach from their respective perspectives, and it worked, I must say. We are quite pleased with the results of the summit. The declaration has been adopted in Vilnius, really a comprehensive declaration that puts a very strong emphasis on this north-south connectivity, especially after the Russian aggression against Ukraine. We also are very pleased with the outcomes of the business forum, which was really, I think, the biggest economic event in Vilnius this year, with more than 1,000 registrations and 31 countries represented in various panels of the forum, around 20 side events and many, many B2B meetings, et cetera. And by the way, in the Vilnius Business Forum, we had the first ever geographically designed panel dedicated to Ukraine and to its reconstruction. And by the way, there was. And by the way, there was another side event, the International Transport Forum, which was also coincidentally chaired this year by Lithuania, which also took place as a back-to-back event to the IIISI Business Forum in Vilnius. There were a couple of sectorial initiatives that we tabled during our chairmanship of the IIISI. One of them was on the creation of the kind of multi-country coordination network dedicated to green finance. And then another initiative was tabled on the establishment on a collaborative platform in the area of cybersecurity. Regarding the priority projects, actually, indeed, the number is now quite impressive, 144 projects. And the list actually has increased quite significantly precisely during the Lithuanian chairmanship. And the reasons of that are very clear and simple. First of all, we had a new country, Greece, joining the initiative and Greece brought with it its own dozen of projects. And then what we managed to achieve, and this is, I think, we are quite proud about it, that we also invited the associated partners, Ukraine and Moldova, also through this very practical tool, to join the initiative and to become part of this IIISI project ecosystem. So with Greece, Ukraine and Moldova submitting their national priority projects, the list now has become really quite impressive and indeed, maybe at some point, we will need to talk about the streamlining, et cetera. What else? Yeah, what we also witnessed in Vilnius during the Business Forum was the signing of the Letter of Intent on the creation of the Successor Fund of the Three C's Initiative. So the financial vehicle, the commercial vehicle, that is also a unique feature of the IIISI. So we had the first investment fund created also with the stronger leadership of Ambassador Beta Dacinska Muzicca. And now, I think, we're in a second phase and hopefully, this successor fund will continue to carry on this commercial, you know, aspect of the Three C's Initiative, which is very important. In terms of synergy, coming back to the synergies between EU and the IIISI, what we also managed to do was to organize the first-ever meeting of coreper ambassadors with one of the commissioners of the European Union, Commissioner Valian for Transport. This also happened here in Brussels last fall and we think this practice actually could continue. And in particular, now in the run-up to the Warsaw Summit and the Polish presidency, I think we have a very good kind of premise with the also EU-Polish presidency, which could be beneficial for these EU and IIISI synergies. So this practice of meetings in Brussels, I think, could continue. And last but not least, maybe a word on geography. Actually, the biggest, I think, beauty or positive sign, expression of the IIISI is that the appetite for membership in this framework is actually growing. We have, in Vilnius, we also had some countries applying to become members, some others expressing an interest to become strategic partners. And by the way, around the summit table in Vilnius, we had countries like Israel, Spain, Montenegro joining the ranks, also Turkey and Finland. They also were invited as summit guests. And I think for the north-south connectivity, this bodes really well, that there is this appetite for the Three C's Initiative from the neighboring countries, but also from farther apart. And I think the IIISI really should not be shy about its geographical potential and its attractiveness. And my very last word is that we really wish all the success for the current Polish presidency because, of course, the initiative is approaching the 10th anniversary, which is, of course, a huge milestone. And maybe this moment can also be used also to initiate some sort of internal reflection, some sort of review, because, of course, no framework, you know, remains static and there are always reforms and ways how we try to improve it. And I think this 10th anniversary is really a good opportunity to try and do that. So thank you very much, Professor.
And the next question I would like to ask to Mr. Gorgos Mitrakos from Greece, because Greece is a good example how the IIICI is interesting and attractive, yes? Because Greece became a new associating partner of the Three C's in 2023. So what was the reason for Greece to become a part of the IIICI initiative with the fourth sea on board? How the Three C's and the European Union can contribute from the unique geopolitical position of Greece within the IIICI initiative?
Okay, so allow me first to thank His Excellency Mr. Arkadiusz Mullarczyk and the IIICSI Research Center of the Institute of Political Studies of the Polish Academy of Sciences for the kind invitation and for the initiative to hold today's hearing about the Three C's Initiative. I would like to start with a thought that I have shared in the past in another event that shows the importance of the initiative. If the Three C's Initiative didn't exist, we should have created it, invented it. I said that about Greece, but it's also true for the European Union. So, as you rightly said, by joining, Greece can significantly contribute to the initiative by opening up the southern route of connectivity, whether it concerns rail and road connectivity or energy, as we can become the natural entry point for energy, either natural gas or energy from renewable sources from the south to the north. Besides, bringing the Aegean Sea into the initiative offers this strategic benefit of direct access to the fourth sea, the Mediterranean, considering that the Aegean connects with the Black Sea and the Ionian is the south continuation of the Adriatic Sea. Greece, with its unique geopolitical location at the crossroads between Europe, Asia and Africa, a natural entry point in the South Europe for energy and transport, a connectivity corridor and a getaway for Southern Europe, joined this initiative, not just because of its unique location, but more importantly, because it shares the same priorities with the rest of the IIICI countries, namely, regional infrastructure connectivity, economic development, competitiveness, energy diversification and security digitalization, and of course, attracting new foreign investment into the European Union. With Greece on board, the IIICSI region significantly expands its trade routes and logistical capacities, both in sea and land, with Greece's railways and roads networks, the Greek ports in northern Greece, Thessaloniki, Cavala and Alexandroupolis, but also Piraeus, one of the largest ports in Europe in terms of trade volume. These ports offer a crucial maritime link between Europe, Asia and Africa, reducing transit times for exports of goods and, most importantly, bypassing crucial geopolitical host ports. Connecting them with the ports of the Black Sea and the Baltic Sea will definitely enhance the north-south connectivity axis, which is the IIICSI's top priority. Greece's participation in the IIICSI also increases the potential for economic growth and energy security in the broader region, since we are involved in several major energy projects: TAP, Tanap, IGB, Euroasia Interconnector, EastMed, just to name a few. Greece is also a key player when it comes to LNG terminals, especially in northern Greece with the FC RU in Alexandroupolis and Revithousa. Connecting these LNG terminals with gas pipelines like type TAP and IGB will help reduce the region's dependence on Russian gas, offering alternative sources of energy and thus supporting energy security and diversification in the wider central southern Europe. Greece is also a major player when it comes to renewable energy, especially in solar and wind. Connecting our energy grids will enhance the IIICSI countries' efforts for the gradual transition to alternative and green energy resources, thus contributing to the European Union's Green Deal goals for a low-carbon emission economy by 2050. Greece, with its unique geostrategic position, has always acted as a pillar of stability and security in the Mediterranean and southeastern Europe. So it was only natural to join an initiative that serves common values of stability, security and good neighbor relations. Integrating Greece into the IIICSI will strengthen ties between the Balkans and Central Europe, but also will provide new opportunities for cooperation between Greece's neighbors in the Eastern Mediterranean and the rest of the IIICSI countries, with Greece acting as a bridge and a facilitator of this cooperation. Moreover, the inclusion of Greece in the IIICSI will definitely help mitigate security threats, such migration, terrorism and military tensions stemming from the Middle East, the MENA region and Eastern Mediterranean. Improved military transport corridors between Greece and Central Europe can also support NATO's rapid response capabilities in the event of new security threats from the east. So to sum up, Greece's inclusion in the IIICI provides a significant geopolitical boost in this platform and this unified north-south bloc in the European Union of the 27. By expanding the geographic reach to the Aegean, Greece helps enhance IIICSI relevance in the regional connectivity, infrastructure, trade and commerce, energy diversification and military security. With Greece as a partner, the IIICSI will not only complement the north-south connectivity axis, but also reinforce the IIICSI countries' resilience in the face of the security threats I've just mentioned. This will allow the IIICSI countries to play a greater role in the European and global affairs and thus offering new opportunities for economic growth, regional stability and European resilience. Thanks.
Thank you for very comprehensive description of the main challenges for Greece within the Three C's Initiative and the contribution of Greece to the Three C's Initiative. I would like to proceed to Her Excellency Bata Adasińska Muzicca and actually, I would like to ask you two questions. The first one is connected with your deep involvement in the financial matters when it comes to the IIICI initiative. Could you briefly refer to the investment funds and other mechanisms to accelerate the programs and the projects to realize within the Three C's Initiatives? And the second question is, because you are also very interested in the new challenges for Central Europe and one of the challenges is the green transition in energy. Could you please refer to this challenge also? Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me here. My congratulations for organizing this important discussion and the presentation of the Three C's Initiative. Let me share, I try to answer through my presentation for these two questions. But let me start with my presentation, that the Three C's Initiative, what was mentioned many times, was established nine years ago by our President Andrei Duda and President Galinda Grbar Kitarovic as a side event in New York during the United Nations Summit, when Agenda 2030 was announced. And one of the sustainable development goals is how to develop the north-south corridors and infrastructure under Axis North-South, not only the east-west, because it is crucial for our region, especially for our region, how to boost our economy. And let me share this presentation, who we are as a Three C's region, some figures, some information and what we achieved and what is ahead of us. The next slide, please. The economic potential. The turnover, you can read, and I don't want to focus on the turnover. I rather want to focus on the population. It is 120 million population. It means it was 26, over 26% of the total population of the European Union and our territory, it is 32% of the total European Union. At the same time, GDP, our GDP, it is less than 40%. It shows you the huge gaps that we have comparing to the rest of the European Union countries. And from the other hand, we are the fastest-growing region with the average GDP from the last five years, it is almost 3% comparing to 1.3% of the entire European Union. At the same time, we know that the investment gaps are huge. So we need to spend over 600 billion euro only for the three sectors, energy, transportation and digital infrastructure, up to 2036 hundred billion euro. It is a lot of money that we have to find in the many different places, not only EU funds, not only the public money, to mobilize the private capital as well. And as you see on the map, there is 13 countries, two associated countries, two associated states. It is Moldova and Ukraine. And also for a strategic partner, which was mentioned, it is EU Commission, Germany, US and Japan. So the next slide, please. I would like to underline that this initiative has four dimensions. For the most important dimension, there is another that we can look in for, but the presidential dimension, it is endorsement for this initiative, for all actions that are taken in this region. We need more cooperation on the governmental level because the governmental level, it is important how to decide about the strategic project, which was mentioned by many pre-speakers. And this is what we have to agree, how to build and how to speed up the infrastructure investment under Axis North-South. Only through the cooperation and coordination on the governmental level it is possible. And the third is the financial dimension. Yes, we established the Three C's Fund and I mention about these figures maybe later on, what we achieved and how we achieved. But we need definitely the public fund, governmental money. We needed the EU funds, but we also needed a huge cooperation between the development banks, commercial banks and multilateral development institutions. And of course, the business dimension, we need more cooperation between the businesses in our region in many, many other areas, not only the three sectors, as in energy, digital and transportation, because we have a lot of our heritage as countries, as nations and we can share by tourism, by culture, by education and the others areas that we present. And I used to encourage the number of people during the conferences across the world, "Don't spend money formally, diversely. Let's come to our countries and visit the Three C's region." Next slide, please. And in 2015, the main sectors was decided to invest in the energy, transport and digital infrastructure to accelerate the economic development. And I don't want to focus on this slide, so please, next slide. And this is the challenge that we have for the energy. As you see on the slide, it is the green energy in electricity generation in 2020 and how looks on this map and how big challenge we have in our region. On the right-hand side, you can see the climate policy until 2030. So it is a huge challenge and a huge transformation that we have to implement to achieve this goal and to have the production and to turn our production into the green energy. But I would like to share also, in terms of the latest report of Mr. Draghi about the competitiveness of the European Union. And on the next slide, you can see how looks the energy production in real world. So the basic production of electricity, it is coal, oil and gas, as you can see on the slide. So this transformation has to be very smart because, on the other hand, we are losing the competitiveness comparing to China and US. And this is a huge challenge. I don't think that we can change this... I don’t think that we can change this transformation. We have to follow this transformation, that is for sure. But in the other hand, we have to think also about our competitiveness and our production productivity and the prices of energy, which are two, three times higher than the energy in the US or China. So the next slide, please. On the next slide, you can see the transport investment and the connectivity. If you want to go from Gettenburg to Barcelona, it is almost the same distance like Tallinn to Constantia. And if you want to use your car, you probably spend 25 hours from Gettenburg to Barcelona and 32 hours from Tallinn to Constantia. But when you use the train, you spend almost three days from Tallinn to Constantia. So it is significant evidence that we need to spend more investment in rail and road in our region. And the one story which is good picture to identify why we need this infrastructure. There is a border, a natural border between Romania and Bulgaria. It is over 450 kilometres and the Duna River. How many bridges are there? Only two. And we as Poland have also the natural border between Poland and Germany. It is Oder River and it is 187 kilometres. How many bridges we have? 29. It is the example why we need to invest in the north-south axis and why we have to speed up to be comparable in our economy to the EU 15. So the next slide, please. And here is the TEN-T, the corridor network, which are important for the entire European Union. And I would like to focus on the Via Karpatia. Via Karpatia is a strategic corridor, not only for the transportation. It is the most important road from the security point of view. It is a strategic road for transportation. And bearing in mind the war in Ukraine, it is impossible to build the transportation without the development of Via Karpatia and the role of Poland and Romania especially, but also the other countries. How to distribute if we are thinking and we are repeating many times, we want to rebuild Ukraine, we want to transform Moldova. But it is impossible to do this without the IIISI region. So the next slide, please. And of course, the ICT infrastructure investment, so digital infrastructure investment. To be honest, it is very difficult to talk about the digital investment. Of course, in many countries, also in the IIISI countries, the Covid crisis improved our infrastructure. But bearing in mind the innovation and the ICT sector, it is hugely important for innovation, it is difficult to mention that we are innovated at other countries and we can compete. And if you take into account that we are in the huge speed and competition between the biggest countries like US and China, so we as a IIISI region, we are nowhere, to be honest. It is impossible to catch up our infrastructure needs comparing to these countries that I mentioned. But we have to focusing on this infrastructure and we have to do our best to invest and to find the investment capacity to deliver the number of projects. So the next slide, please. This is what Madame Managing Director Kristalina Georgieva said preparing the report about our region, that closing the 50% of infrastructure gaps in IIISI region, so this central eastern part of European Union, we should spend annually 3% to 8% of our GDP. So this is a huge challenge for all countries. And of course, this is a huge effort also for the European Union as a whole body. So the next slide, please. And here is a few words about the IIISI Investment Fund. And the IIISI Fund was established in 2019 and fully operational in 2020. And it is exactly when the Covid crisis started and the whole world was freeze. But even though we do our best to find a number of projects which are suitable, cross-border project to the IIISI Investment Fund strategy. We already have the five investments. So Cargo Union, it is list of locomotive. It is an important company also to deliver the locomotive for Ukraine and how to deliver the goods to Ukraine. Also the transportation, it is Burgasport. Of course, digital sector, it is data centre in Estonia. And the solar plant in a number of countries, as you can see by the flags on the right-hand side. What is important and what I would like to underline? The estimated total value of this investment, it is 6 billion euro. So we leverage 1.3 billion dollars because it is 1 billion dollars which was committed by the development banks and 300 million by US development corporations. So all in all, it is 1.3 billion dollars. But the total value investments, it is already 6 billion. So it shows you, it is worth to invest, it is worth to looking for the opportunities also for the private sector, especially. The targeted ERR, it is 12% to 15%. So it is a huge achievement. Because when I talk with my Japanese friends, they always ask me, “It is HOMA between 1.2% or it is really 12%?” So it is worth to invest here. This five investment that you can see on the slide, it is single out the best project because we reviewed in the entire region excluding Greece. I am so sorry. You are not a part of that time of the IIISI region and the initiative. But we reviewed over 300 projects which were suitable to the IIISI fund. So it shows that it is huge potential and this is huge opportunity for the private investor and especially for the mix of investment bearing in mind PPP projects, which are the most important for us. And the next slide, please. Only to show you, this is not only the infrastructure, energy, digital and transportation, but we have also the huge gaps in education and healthcare utilities. So this region, because I talked to you only about the gaps between the infrastructure in a region, IIISI region, post-communist region comparing to the western part of the European Union. So we compare the quality which exists already on the western part of Europe to what we have in our region. And if we are thinking seriously about the future of the European Union as a whole body, it is impossible to build a stronger European Union without to invest in the IIISI region and to build and accelerate the investment in number of these sectors that we have on the slide. And the last slide, it is conclusion. Investment opportunities for sure, developing north-south corridors. And don’t forget, we are the eastern flank of NATO and the security across the world, it is not taken for granted. We know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your bittersweet contribution, I would say. It was very comprehensive, but it included this very bitter facts about the IIICI region, but nevertheless also the positive message about the investment in the region. And the last question I would like to ask Mr Octavian Dragomiriora, the professor at the Bucharest University. And exactly, I would like to ask you how we could contribute, I mean the IIICI countries, to the economic growth in the European Union as such?
Thank you. My basic contribution to this very exquisite debate is trying to understand things better and putting them to good use. I think this is point zero in striving for growth or development or competitiveness. And there is much need in the IIISI ecosystem of a specific kind of knowledge that could indicate its importance for each and every country in the region, and not to say for each and every business or for each and every individual. So I’m an economist. Basically, I have other scenes, but this is the biggest one. But I’m a particular kind of economist who does not put much emphasis on figures. So if you want to extract figures from me, you can torture me. But otherwise, I rely more on reasoning and then I resort to statistics. So my contribution today to this debate is advancing three lines of research. I hope they are quite original. I haven’t noticed them in the literature. And I think they can add to the debate regarding why do we need IIISI as it is or how to improve it. First point. Yesterday, Darren S. Moglu, James Robinson and another distinguished guy whose name is not on my radar, Simon Johnson, received what is colloquially known as the Nobel Prize in Economics. And basically, their idea is that institutions matter. So it’s not everything about the money, specifically in the case of the IIISI, but it’s about the institutional setting in which you use the money. And I use the term “use” because there is much confusion among practitioners, not to mention among scholars, that spending equals investment. In fact, it’s pretty much the opposite when we speak about public spending. That somehow accidentally, I’m bad here, I’m polemical here, but somehow more accidentally turned into lucrative investment. Many spending becomes spending, if not blunt waste. So the IIISI initiative has what it takes to transform spending into investment. And I give you three reasons that are of institutional nature, why money put in the coffins of the IIISI instruments could be productive and not just spent. One point is, one driver is the IIISI fund, which is managed very close to a for-profit organisation. It’s not necessarily as a bureaucratic one, which is the case with the most allocation in which governments are involved despite the valuations of the politicians. The second reason is that every summit in the IIISI has an assorted business forum next to it, which is in fact a good sign that the politicians understand the driving force of entrepreneurs and capitalists in channeling economic growth, development and competitiveness in the region and not just transferring funds from one pocket to another by public means. And the third point that is to be explored and enhanced is the network of chambers of commerce, which is an initiative from the Romanian part of this gathering that is under-exploited for the moment. And a research point that might come out of this specter is to emphasise how the institutional setting in which value is created within the IIISI initiative is conducive to economic growth, to development and to competitiveness. It’s not just about the money, it’s never just about the money, it’s about the rules of the game and the soundness of the rules of the game. And I think there are pretty good signs in the IIISI environment. The second point, the second point is related to the most used words. I think here in Brussels, they are the most used words after hello and goodbye. That is convergence and cohesion. Very much talk about these two words and very less knowledge about the profound nature of the transformation that they can put in motion. And I have a point here, that if we strive to be convergent at the level of the European Union, we try, we have to try first to put to work this convergence within the almost equal countries that are vetubrating the IIISI initiative. Because it’s a place where cohesion can show its results more easily. It’s a very fine training ground and playing field for the greater convergence at the level of the European Union. And what is not necessarily observed when you speak about cohesion is that this kind of cohesion by interconnectedness among the IIISI countries, besides adding to the convergence and cohesion at the level of the European Union, could add at the convergence, at the cohesion of the countries within the countries that compose this initiative. We have much inequality, much disparity, much imbalances to be addressed at the level of each and every country in the initiative. And the third point is that we speak about the great potential of the region in terms of growth. We are a vivid part of the European Union when the western side of it is more or less latent or lazy. But we have to have in mind that we are growing, but we are still small. Each and every country in the IIISI initiative is a small country by the standards of what is interesting for others to be an investment point or a commercial point. So what is nice with this initiative is that it has the potential of bundling markets. When you have investors looking for specific countries in the region, they do not look because there is not necessarily too much ground on considering each and every country as a promising destination for capitals in a very competitive international market for capital. But if those countries are interconnected, their markets are linked to each other, their value chains are part of a greater design and their workforce is flexible and has the potential of finding work within this region and not necessarily crossing over Europe towards its western part. These investments in this part of Europe can be seen in a much brighter light. More markets, more integrated markets, more interchained value chains can be more attractive to capitals from all over the world, from the United States, United Kingdom or from Eastern Asia, Japan or South Korea. These are three main points that I think should be discussed and addressed in research topics. Because we need to comprehend the IIISI initiative, favourable points, understand its weaknesses and communicate them properly. Because everybody knows in each and every country of the distinguished panelists and maybe from those of the auditorium. maybe from those of the auditorium, IIISI is not a topic, it's not a fancy topic, it's not an appealing topic. But it has very much reason behind it in order to move on top of the political agenda, because economics says that it's reasonable to do so. Thank you for my small intervention. I went to, gave a special praise for the scientific literature that was enriched by the excellent monograph coordinated by Professor Agnieszka Ozekastaczyk and by the extremely and thorough analysis done with regards to EC countries, their economic interconnections and their place and posture to the world in a very fine study coordinated and realized by Konrad Poplaski and Sandra Banyak, which is a masterpiece for me and my students. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for this interesting discussion. Before we end the public hearing, I would like to ask you if you have any questions for our excellence speakers. Please, Richard.
Yes, thank you. My name is Richard Skolz, I'm from Latvia, also the part of the IIICs as well, a member state. Well, the question would be very simple. So we strive to attract investment, looking for the private sector in particular. I mean, to complain that there are too many projects, well, thank God, finally the IIICs are actually not the politicians decide which project is to be financed or not, is the professionals actually assessing if there is added value for attracting the investment? So I guess that makes totally different this fund as well. But this said, of course, we are tracking the private investment and most likely we are looking at the OECD countries and et cetera. So my question would be, how it goes hand in hand, the IIICs, and I dropped the initiative because it's ten years, I mean, it cannot be initiative, it's already a IIICs project as such. How it goes hand in hand, still, a lot of member states of IIICs are also part of the sixteen plus one, on this investment attraction and so on. Their projects, the sixteen plus one is promoting almost the same that the IIICs, roads, rail, infrastructure in general. So how do you see, will be there also portion from the sixteen plus one, from the remaining members of the IIICs or it's just going to go parallel to each other? Because for me, it doesn't comprehend.
Great, thank you. Thank you. I would like to ask Mr Ambassador, please.
Maybe just a word before passing the floor to... So from my side, there is a clear distinction between the IIISI and the, you called it sixteen plus one, but I would say fourteen plus one, because the membership is getting less and less on that side. So the clear distinction and difference is that the IIISI represents an indigenous, indigenous European offer of regional connectivity, while this other format, to which you have alluded, was a format that was actually imposed on the region by an external actor, China. And of course, you know, at least from our national perspective, we rather believe in trusted connectivity networks, in partners whom we trust. And I think China has a whole different model of connectivity that it offers to the world through Belt and Road and other initiatives. I think many countries in the world, they have realized what kind of political agenda was behind these Chinese connectivity initiatives. So I clearly see the IIICI initiative as a more natural connectivity framework, again, indigenous framework, where, you know, there is a regional ownership by the countries that got together, first, you know, twelve countries, now thirteen countries, we are within the EU. And by the way, speaking of global connectivity networks, I think the IIICI initiative also can serve as a kind of extension of the internal European connectivity to global transport corridors through the global gateway, European initiative. And this is another EU element that comes in and makes the IIICI initiative very relevant for the European policies. So again, to me, those are, I mean, there is a very clear distinction and I would rather go our indigenous way instead of taking some offers from outside.
Maybe one word about, it was even seventeen plus one, but finally, as you heard, this have fourteen, maybe thirteen and maybe twelve. What was the foundation for the IIICI initiative? It was the IIICI Investment Fund. And it was exactly the same what the Chinese are trying to do, especially ICBC trying to establish the SinosEE Fund, which was not finally established. And it was the cornerstone probably for the, it could be the cornerstone also for the sixteen seventeen plus one initiative. In terms of project that you mentioned, there is two types of projects, because we have to distinguish the project which was reviewed by IIICI Investment Fund, based on the general regulation and based on the financial sector, capital market and so on. And another type of project, it is a governmental project, strategic project, which is reviewed by the governmental ministries and experts. So it is two types of project. At the beginning, the IIICI Fund reviewed this strategic project and unfortunately, there's too much strategic project, it is not suitable to the private sectors, because we have to identify only this type of project which will be, which will deliver the rate of return to the investors. So this is two types of project and we have to distinguish which is the project which are delivered by government and which are delivered by the IIICI Fund. I forgot to mention about this investment, I mentioned only about the achievement by the IIICI Fund, the six billion value, which are the total value of the five investments. But at the same time, since two thousand eighteen to two thousand and two thousand twenty-two, the governments, the common effort, our governments, based on public money and EU funds, it is over eighty billion euro which was spent for this infrastructure, only for these three sectors. So it is huge achievement, I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? I didn't see. So I would like to sincerely thank all the panelists who took part today, to everyone who here, who attended the event and to all of these who viewed online. I see now there is almost six hundred viewers. This has been a hugely important discussion and hopefully the first of many such discussions on the IIIC in the term of the European Parliament. Discussion and debate on the IIIC must continue and that's why I would like to ask all Member of European Parliament here today to join the intergroup on the IIIC Initiative. This intergroup will continue to excellent work done in the previous term under Vito Vascekowski to carry on the baton. This IIIC represents the voice of Central Europe and it is important for Member of European Parliament from Central European Member States and Western European Member States to join, participate and discuss issues that involve the IIIC Initiative area like this one today. I mentioned in many opening speeches, the important role for the US and Japan play as global IIIC partners and in spreading the reach of the IIIC Initiative. But please don't forget that the European Commission and Germany are also vital IIIC Initiative partners and can also see the potential of the IIIC block. This is especially important as the EU has an EU strategy for the Baltic Sea region, an EU strategy for the Danube region and the EU strategy for the Adriatic Ionian region. Therefore, a busy and effective intergroup will potentially allow IIIC Initiative states to help shape policy that affected our area. I would like also all assistant, our colleagues, Member of European Parliament and advisors here who have attended on behalf of the Member of European Parliament, to pass on the information about the IIIC Initiative intergroup and to act quickly to sign up, as there are only a few days before the deadline for intergroups. The motion to sign up for the intergroup will be circulating around the room. If you don't see it, please speak to my assistant Dominic and David and they are circulating the motion on the hemicycle. Thank you once again to our panelists and to you and our online audience for attending this public hearing on the IIIC Initiative. Thank you very much. Thank you.